Yeah.
Good evening, and welcome to this meeting of Westminster's Mayor and Common Council. The council meets here at City Hall on the second and fourth Mondays of every month. Please benefit council meetings, although open to the public here at City Hall, are also available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page as well as the Community Media Center channel on website. Now begins we do every meeting with a flag to the flag followed by a mobile signs. I believe it just. Elimination of the God, with the repeating in council's sorrow. Thank you. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phone or any other electronic devices you have with you that might interrupt the meeting. Thank you. Part of the tonight's agenda and your entire information package that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. Conference of the agenda are available here in the front room for those who are attending today. We have two presentations this evening, and for that we will turn to the mayor to lead us through those.
Thank you, council. I'd like to ask. Yes, yes, yeah. No, I had to, but I couldn't understand why everyone was all some pointing over that way and waiting. Alright, so this is in recognition of National Public Works Week for 2024. Whereas public work services provided in the City of Westminster are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives. And the services provided by the Westminster Public Works Department staff include utility maintenance, snow plowing, water treatment and distribution, sewage treatment, street repairs, facility maintenance, and repair of city equipment. And the health, safety, and comfort and quality of the Westminster community greatly depend on these services. And the quality and effectiveness of these services as well as their planning, design, and implementation is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the city's public work employees. Whereas the mayor and common council wish to publicly salute the services and contributions of the employees of the Westminster Public Works Department. Now therefore, I, Dr. Monde Becker, Mayor of the City of Westminster, in conjunction with the common council, do hereby proclaim May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, 2024 as National Public Works Week in the City of Westminster. And be it further proclaimed that all residents are encouraged to join the mayor and common council in commemorating this observance by thanking the members of the Public Works Department, past and present, for their dedicated service to the City of Westminster and for their efforts to maintain and enhance the quality of life in the Westminster community. Thank you. Do you like to say anything?
Speech, oh.
You don't need to, but.
Thank you very much.
One thing I would add to that as well is that the wastewater treatment plant has always been very amenable in the past when I have brought environmental science classes.
And you are always welcome.
Yep, I appreciate that. Thank you. Alright, next I'd like to ask Dr. Gallagher. So the Celtic Canter is an annual running festival in downtown Westminster held around St. Patrick's Day. It was founded by Dr. Patrick Gallagher and Allurans Irish Pope, and it has grown in partnership with the City of Westminster and now attracts over one thousand runners. In addition to a great crowd of runners, the races enhance with other activities, including live entertainment, Irish and Celtic-themed vendors, children's activities, a lively Celtic crawl, and much more, sometimes snow. Off the screen. Due to the growing success of this event, race proceeds can be donated to three local charities, which in turn supply the city with nearly one hundred volunteers to assist with event staffing and logistics. This evening, Access Carroll, Target Community Services, sorry, Target Community and Educational Services, and Crossroads Community Church are the three charities receiving donation checks. Here tonight to assist with the presentation is race founder, Dr. Patrick Gallagher. Before we present the checks, is there anything that you would like to say?
Well, thank you, Mayor, for your support of the events. Thank you to the City of Westminster and your continued support, the police department and the streets department. And lastly, Abby and Heather and their team. I know they put in very early morning hours and late evenings. You give them off the Monday after weekend events, right?
Oh, normally Mrs. Gruber does not attend a council meeting, but she is here this evening after Flower and Jazz, so I was quite sure.
I was pleased to find out though that the Flower and Jazz is just as much a magnet for rain as the Celtic Canter. It's not just the Celtic Canter. And my wife and I, we had some cousins, Irish cousins that are visiting America, and they were out in Denver, right? And they were at Red Rocks and they were entrenched. And she said that they know how to deal with rain and adverse conditions. So I guess it's just part of the process.
It wouldn't be rainy and dreary on the Celtic Canter. It wouldn't feel like our.
Yes, yes, yes. I'd like to thank my wife for all the work that she does with the events. I certainly couldn't do it without her.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, first, we would like to call Kristen Sorbourn, Development and Compliance Specialist with Access Carroll, to receive their check. You get a big check. There, pull up. Yeah, there we go. Are we good? Congratulations.
Yes, appreciated, appreciated.
Would you like to say something about Access Carroll or?
Sure, yeah. Access Carroll is just a block down here on the corner at Twenty-Seven and Distillery Drive. We are Carroll County's full-time safety net for people in need of healthcare, behavioral healthcare, and dental care. I should have said medical. I said it wrong, sorry. But yeah, we offer services on a sliding fee scale. And we don't refuse to see anyone for essential services regardless of their ability to pay. So we really like to, you know, help. And so we really appreciate what you all do to help. And then, separate note, as a Westminster citizen, I really, really appreciate all the city events you all put on for me and you. It's a great time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next, I'd like to invite President and CEO, Dr. Matthew Ramsey from Target Community and Educational Services, to receive their checks.
Yeah, yeah.
Please, please come on, yeah.
I'm gonna take a picture of myself.
You may stand. You guys stand in the middle or somewhere there.
Great, you did all the work with the volunteers. Thank you.
One, two, three. Alright, would you like to say anything? I'm sorry.
That'd be great. So Target is an agency that's been around for about forty-one years. We serve adults with disabilities in their residence, in the community, and also in the workplace. Our mission is to enhance the lives of others. That includes not only the people that we serve, but the people that serve the people that we serve. We also have a unique partnership with McDaniel College where our residential managers are working on a master's degree in human services management. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, to finish our check presentations this evening, would Beth Hewitt, Camps Administrator, Steph Albright, Director of Missions from Crossroad Community Church, come into the front of the room, please, to receive her. One, two, three. Okay, would you like to say anything about Crossroads?
That's it. Well, no, we just really appreciate you all letting us be a part of the community. We just love you guys. We love Westminster and want to be able to come alongside you guys wherever.
Okay, so thank you. We appreciate you as well in the role that you play in the city. Crossroads is the sponsor of the very arduous point five K. Council does it every single year.
I'm training already for next.
I mean, it is, it is, thank goodness that halfway through the point five K, there are coffee and donuts. And there's always lots of encouragement along the way from your members. Point two five to go.
Found the block, right?
It's hard. It's rough.
Yeah, it's way too.
I mean, and Councilmember Gilbert, I mean, she does the five K, and then she does the point five K. I mean, yeah.
Wow, it's a great thing. Thank you.
Oh, I did not last.
That's the real shit.
Thank you so much. Thank you. It's really a pleasure.
So, thank you, yeah. For everyone, we are grateful to all of you for your gift of volunteer service and the good that you do in our community, not only at the festivals and events, but daily. And we hope that this donation can be used in a meaningful way. And I think we should just all thank the volunteers and congratulate them with a round of applause, please.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. One, two. Thank you, Dr. Gallagher. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Becker, Dr. Gallagher, and everybody else. We appreciate your joining us. Always fun to celebrate our food on drinks as well as our volunteers and being able to.
I know.
Damn, I can't blame their women. It's an exciting evening of speaking.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And we're going now to the food more events. We have dinner from the meeting of the mayor and common council. On April twenty-second, they have a motion to approve the events.
Motion to approve.
But a motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
Second.
With second by Mrs. Eover. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The I see, the having, the nice habit. And the middle of our group. We have five items on a consent calendar this evening. We have a motion to approve the consent, a motion to approve. Then a motion by Mr. Dayhoff to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Kovachi. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The I seem to have, the I's have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Or from the mayor, Dr. Becker.
Alright, thank you, Council President, Taquero. I have a few things to this report on. Before we launch and the rest of the meeting here. Just a reminder, it was recognized in April at one of our last council meetings. But I did just want to point out that last week was the fifty-fifth annual municipal clerk's week. And to do that, I would just like to say, extend my thanks to Mr. Barber for keeping us on the straight and narrow and watching out for us as we conduct business within the city. We could not have a better clerk within the city.
Yeah, yeah.
I, we were doing, yeah, right? I don't know. But anyway, I did want to also point out that even though we had recognized this as well at the meeting in April, this is National Police Week, so Major Price, and to the Westminster Police Department. I think we have one of the best police departments within the state, if not in this, in this region. And I appreciate. uh, if not in this, in this region, and I appreciate seeing everyone out um, on the streets at events, um, daily within the city. So, Major Price, please convey. I will convey, I can read that information. Uh, and tomorrow is officially what, uh, is called, uh, Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is held during this week as well. Uh, on Friday, April twenty-sixth, uh, I, along with several other council members, attended the nature kickoff and a tree planting at Wakefield Valley Golf Course. Uh, this was held by the Durbin House and the clubhouse. There were multiple tables for arts and crafts that were set up throughout the evening. Uh, it was well-attended by families, uh, and children that had come out to the event. Um, I thoroughly enjoyed the evening. I made a few bird feeders for our yard at home at one of the, at one of the stands. Uh, Flower and Jazz, I think that we'll probably talk about that a little bit later as well. Um, it didn't rain, the weather was perfect, it was amazing, Main Street was packed. And again, all the staff that are involved in our events, right? All the staff from the city, across all departments, involved in our downtown festivals that draw thousands of people to Main Street. Um, it was just a fantastic day. Uh, on Saturday, um, a number of council members and I, Saturday, May fourth, um, some council members and I attended the open house at Justin's Place. Uh, this is a, um, uh, organization that is right next to Forty-five West Main Street, uh, which is the large brick building, and they had an open house to review some of the programs that you offer for, uh, men in Westminster, and you could also take a tour of their facility. And I know myself was there, Councilmember Gilbert, uh, attended, and Councilmember Dayhoff was there as well. Uh, after that, um, tomorrow, oh, sorry, not tomorrow, but, um, starting Saturday on May eighteenth, uh, our downtown Westminster Farmers Market will open. Uh, this is the first Saturday of the year, and it is open every Saturday until November twenty-third. It is the longest-running market over the summer within Carroll County. Um, on any given Saturday from May eighteenth onward, there will be twenty-two vendors, uh, at the Farmers Market, including a food truck and a nonprofit. There will be music every Saturday. Uh, there will be familiar vendors back, as well as some new vendors at the Farmers Market as well. Uh, this Saturday, I'm sure there'll be plenty of plants to pick up, um, being that it's early in the season. Uh, and also, I'd like to give a shout out to Melissa Thorne, who is our Economic Development Coordinator. She has done an amazing job managing the market, recruiting vendors, uh, organizing the nonprofits and the music and the food trucks to come in for those Saturday mornings. So you will be able to find me at the market, um, on any Saturday that I'm in town from about eight AM, and the market runs until noon. And then finally, uh, tomorrow's Maryland primaries, uh, and so don't forget to vote. Thank you, Mrs. President.
Very good, thank you, Mayor. Uh, move on now. Reports from committees will begin with, um, our liaison to the Carroll County Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we're working on the budget, um, and a lot of exciting programming at the Carroll Arts Center. Check the website for, for details. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Alpern. Just a reminder that the reason we have a council liaison to the Carroll County Arts Council is because, um, the city hosts the Arts Council in the old Carroll Theater Building, which we are pleased to be able to do, and we have done since, uh, the city purchased the building and, uh, and turned it over to the Arts Council for the years.
Yeah.
So again, contribution to City Westminster makes the arts in our.
And it benefits the entire county. So once again, we're shouldering all of its to the benefit of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Um, Mr. Hoff is not here for the Economic and Community Development Committee. Um, he is picking up his son from college, which is always a fun thing to be able to do when you have kids, bring them home for the summer. On behalf of the Finance Committee, uh, we are going to be taking up, uh, introduction of the budget later this evening, and I just want to say good thank you to our staff, Ms. Zimhols and Ms. Rogers, um, and everybody else involved, all the department heads who have spent a lot of time working on, uh, helping to make this possible. Um, very pleased with this year's budget, and we'll talk more about it in a few minutes. Uh, but, you know, it's a result of careful long-term planning by the staff, thoughtful, very thoughtful use of federal and state funds that have been made available to us over the last, uh, few years, skillful management of city expenditures, and regular oversight, and actively engaging from the government's financial statement. And that's allowing us to present a budget that's not only balanced this year, same tax rate that's been levied for the past twelve years, but also a budget that is structurally sound, so that no tax increases anticipated in the near future. And that's a, you know, a lot of hard work to make that happen while also providing citizens of Westminster with the services that they expect and deserve. So we're pleased to be. Mr. Kovachi also serves on the Finance Committee, did he want to add anything? Mr. Kovachi?
No, I think the biggest thing is, uh, we're not raising taxes. So I think if, uh, one giant main point is that we're getting it all done within the money that we currently take in and don't need to pull anymore. We've got a balanced budget, uh, and I think we're going to do a lot of new things with it. So staff worked very hard to put it together, uh, very proud of the work they did, but mostly proud that, once again, for many years, we're not asking the citizens to shoulder any more of the load.
Thank you, Mr. Kovachi. Mayor, would you make some decisions on the budget, would you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking for the Personnel Committee to welcome our new Personnel Director, uh, Mr. Barrett. Thank you, it's great to see you here. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Kovachi.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, uh, Deputy Chief Bryce, the Chief Ledwell, and myself, along with some other, uh, deputy PD members, attended the Carroll County, uh, Chamber of Commerce Annual Public Safety Awards, and we were very proud of, uh, a couple of the awards that our officers won. In particular, Sergeant Tinselospinale, Corporal Kevin Chinaki, and PFC Isaac Stipler uh, received the Gold Medal of Valor Award, which is a, that's a big deal. Um, and they got that for their part in successfully de-escalating and disarming an individual last May at Carroll County Hospital who arrived at the emergency department in a mental health crisis with a loaded shotgun. Additionally, uh, and, and just add a little minute on this. You know, it could have been a very sad situation, it could have been a fatal situation for potentially multiple people, but because of the work that our police officers did, along with a couple of those sheriff's deputies, um, that didn't turn out to be what it could have been. Um, Corporal Chinaki, uh, really did a great job de-escalating and communicating with the individual. Ultimately, he was taken down and had to be tased, and there was, um, some minor injuries to a couple of the officers and deputies, but in the end, no one was seriously hurt. It could have been a terrible situation, so very proud of them for the work that they did. They deserved that gold medal award. Also, Sergeant Alan Ecker received a distinguished achievement award for a culmination of exceptional product, projects, and problem-oriented policing and proactive initiatives that he implemented, um, in two thousand twenty-three. So it was a good day for Westminster Police Department at the Carroll County Awards. Um, also, we held our own, uh, award ceremony on April twenty-fourth. I'll just highlight a couple of the recipients. Uh, Police Officer of the Year was Corporal, I'm sorry, Detective Courtney Brandt. Police Rookie of the Year was Police Officer Stephen Winkler, and Supervisor of the Year was Sergeant Timmy Galasfidel, who was mentioned earlier in the County Awards. And then our Civilian Employee of the Year was Property Management Specialist William Parks. Um, there was also a number of other awards and achievements that were, uh, also handed out during that event, but I'm not going to list them all, because most of us were there. Um, and then on April twenty-sixth, Chief, Chief Ledwell participated as a panel, panel member, along with Sheriff DeWes at the Carroll Citizens for Racial Equity Two Thousand Twenty Four Conference. Chief Ledwell discussed a variety of topics, including police training and police, uh, recruitment and retention, problem-oriented and community-oriented policing, and critical incident response. He also answered a variety of questions posed to the panel. Uh, and frankly, it just goes to show we're very fortunate to have someone of his caliber leading the department. Um, we've got a really good deputy chief, too, and as I spend more time around him, I, I'm starting to realize how fortunate we are to have him as well, so that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kovachi. Um, on the Works Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, the Public Works Department has been busy during the normal spring and summer, mowing and pool ma- and park maintenance, not pool maintenance, yeah, sorry, uh, park maintenance. But beyond that, they, um, spent, um, hours assisting the, um, Parks and Recreation Department with their, um, with our, um, strolls. So I want to take time to thank the Public Works Department for preparing for and, um, and working Flower and Jazz stroll. It's a lot of time, as we all know, um, and, uh, just a full day. Luckily, it didn't rain on them this time, but it was a great event, so, um, kudos to everyone. That is all I have for Public Works.
Thank you very much. Uh, would you like to also report on Recreation and Parks?
Recreation and Parks, we had the ribbon telling today of the new Aquatic Center. Um, don't forget to purchase your family pool membership and/or your individual pool membership. And, um, with that, everybody has already talked about the great job of Flower and Jazz Stroll, but I will let Ms. Gruber talk about that later on if she so chooses. Um, that is all I have for Parks today.
All right, very good, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And finally, Technology Committee, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, anyone who follows current events is aware that the Technology Department stays very, very busy. So we really appreciate all your work, keep the city safe and keep the city out of the news. We really appreciate it, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Move on now to Council Comments and Discussion. This is the opportunity for council members to, uh, raise any other items that are on their minds, that are not elsewhere on the agenda. Begin with, uh, Mr. Kovachi.
Good, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kovachi, Mr. Dayhoff.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, I think, um, uh, the mayor probably hit every single one of my points, um, that I already had, so I have no additional comments.
Very good, thank you.
It's all good.
I know, it's good, well, we've got plenty of other things on the agenda.
I should have spoken first.
Very good, thank you. All right, uh, move on now to ordinances and resolutions. We have three items this evening. The first is introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero four, an ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster Maryland approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Ms. Zimhols, are you or Ms. Rogers going to lead us through this?
I'm going to lead you through this. Would you like me to start with the presentation, and then, or would you like to put a motion on the table?
Uh, let's put a motion on the table first, Mr. Kovachi.
President, I believe that the Mayor and Common Council introduced ordinance number twenty, um, sorry, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four, an ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, Maryland, approving and adopting a budget for the City of Westminster for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, and establishing the various city tax rates for fiscal year twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Kovachi. Uh, for the motion, is there a second?
Of course.
Very good, with second by Mr. Dayhoff. All right, Ms. Zimhols.
Sir, I mean, can I just double-check? Mr. Barber, is there an issue?
Yeah, I think it should be in June, it's, yeah, June, July first and to June thirtieth, June thirtieth. And I thought, I thought you said, I think you said January, and I'm like, should be July.
Well, you said July.
Okay, thank you.
If I said January, Mr. Barber, I apologize.
I apologize if I misunderstood, but I'm like, wait a minute.
It's fine, it's very, uh, so important, that's right.
Thank you, sir, I just wanted to clarify the motion for the record. All right, I'm very pleased to present to you tonight the fiscal year twenty-five budget presentation, which we've got on the screen in front of you. Next slide. We always have to start back at the beginning when we talk about the budget and, and the reason why we're doing what we're doing and how we make our decisions. So I just want to briefly go over our vision statement, which is as follows. Westminster is a safe, healthy, and engaged community where new ideas and sustainable innovation enhance the community's quality of life and create economic opportunities for today's residents and for future generations. And I think all of us in this room can definitely think about projects over the last three years, um, or positions that have been created, things that have been funded in the budget that match that vision statement, and that's because that's what's driving us as we make these budget decisions. Next slide. Additionally, the Mayor and Council adopt a strategic plan every year, which is located on our website. The strategic plan includes five critical success factors, which are strong partnerships and engaged community, water and sewer capacity for future generations, economic activity and growth, responsible stewardship of city resources, and a safe and livable community. There are particular to-do list items, action items, that are located under each of these, uh, five critical success factors, and those are also items that we use when preparing the budget. Next slide. The budget structure, for those who are unfamiliar, includes a variety of funds. And we use that as a capital F, a variety of funds, buckets of money that the city uses to help finance various projects and operating items. And those include the General Fund, which is where the city's core services and administrative functions are located, like the Streets Department, um, Human Resources, Finance Department. We also have the Public Housing Fund, which is the public housing authority for our Housing Choice voucher program. That's a, um, where our Director of, of Housing Process is our federal HUD funds. As many of you know, we have a Large Capital Projects Fund, which accounts for all capital improvement program activities. Um, the water main replacement on Main Street, um, new playground equipment, et cetera, falls into that fund. And then, of course, we move to our Enterprise Funds, the Water, Sewer, and Fiber Funds. The Water Fund is where we, you'll see the production, treatment, and distribution of our drinking water. Sewer Fund is where we have the collection and delivery of sewage for treatment and disposal. And then, of course, the Fiber Fund is for construction and operation of the Westminster Fiber Network. Next slide. The General Fund is mainly composed of property taxes. In Maryland, the real property is assessed on a triennial basis by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation, otherwise known as SSTAT. Westminster is in the first of the three-year assessment cycle. This year, the city's net accessible base increased by approximately a hundred and thirty-four million dollars, or six percent from the prior year. This increase results from higher assessments from the reassessment cycle, as well as new properties being added to the tax roll. Next slide. The budget drivers for the fiscal year twenty-five budget include, as Councilmember Kovachi mentioned, and this, the Council President mentioned as well, there's no change in the real property tax rates. So for fiscal year twenty-five, the real property tax rate will remain at point five six cents for a hundred dollars of assessed value, which, as the president indicated, has remained the same for the past twelve years. Water sewer rates will increase three and a half percent for water rates and five percent for sewer rates. And just as a fun factor to put in here, the commuter, Consumer Price Index, which is called the CPI, has increased three percent from March twenty-three to March twenty-four. That accounts for a few of the increases we've seen in things. And I would just like to remind everyone that, uh, CPI that has increased over twenty percent in the last four years, uh, and the city is still, as many others are, still, um, seeing this very high cost for especially construction materials. Uh, things are sometimes three and four and five times more expensive than they were pre-pandemic levels. Next slide.
Ms. Zimhols, can I inject something quickly, just for the public?
You go back, please.
I think it's important to note, you know, that five percent sewer increase, we're building a sixty-three million-dollar wastewater treatment facility, which is astronomically expensive, and that's what's driving that train, is the cost that we're being, you know, saddled with from the state to build that facility, to lower our fluid rate, um, to meet their criteria. They participated, helped us with that, but it's still a significant amount of money that, that, to build that facility. That, that's a big driver for that amount. It's not arbitrary, um, even though it's slightly over what the CPI is. Um, that, that's where that really gets accounted for. Unfortunately, you know, that cost is going to get spread over a lot of years. I just want to point that out for anyone who may be wondering why it's over the, the CPI.
Thank you. Fiscal year twenty-five budget, as the president indicated, is balanced. Revenues in the General Fund are approximately twenty point two million, and expenditures are approximately nineteen point three million. The Housing Fund revenues are approximately three point three million, and expenditures in that fund are three three million. Sewer revenues, nine point one million, expenditures, eight point Sewer revenues, nine point one million, expenditures eight point one million. Water revenues, seven point two million. Expenditures, six point seven million. Fiber is one point eight million and expenditures are one point five million. The overages from those departments that are under revenue will be transferred over to CIP to help fund a variety of capital projects. Alright, so next slide, please. Operating highlights for fiscal year twenty-five. Proposed budget include the following. Sworn officers are scheduled to receive the salary increase as outlined in their approved step plan. The fiscal year twenty-five budget also proposes a three percent increase for full-time employees who are non-not sworn officers, as well as a two percent bonus for all full-time employees. Next slide. The city has incurred quite a few increases increases in the benefit costs. So fourteen percent increase in health insurance. The pensions for the non-sworn employees increased from ten point nine to eleven point three two. The um pension for the sworn employees has increased from thirty-six point two to thirty-six point nine. There's no changes in the life insurance for short-term or long-term life insurance. Workers' comp has increased a little bit, and the general insurance has increased a little bit as well. Next slide. We do have a robust capital improvement plan of almost thirty-six million dollars in projects, most of which are being funded by grants from state and federal um opportunities, as Councilmember Kabachi has indicated. But here are some of the highlights for that. We are nearing completion of the Main Street uh Water Main Replacement Project. I know everyone's excited to get that project over with. Um, I think the team has done a good job, the construction team has done a good job, and the city staff have done a great job, I think, of keeping things moving and limiting complaints um from the neighbors, and honestly, addressing complaints as they come in as well. Uh, we are in the midst of the renovation of the Wakefield Clubhouse and Community Pavilion. Um, so that project is included in the CIP for fiscal year twenty-five. We anticipate that project will be completed before the end of fiscal year twenty-five as well. And as Councilmember Kabachi mentioned, the enhanced nutrient reduction or E N R project at the wastewater facility takes up a lot of capacity and funding for um the CIP as well. It's possible that project will be completed in twenty-five fiscal year twenty-five. We'll see. Um, we're very excited about construction beginning in fiscal year twenty-five for the much anticipated water reuse project. Um, we also have pavement management, our regular infiltration and inflow or I N I project, as well as pedestrian improvements along Main Street and Pennsylvania Avenue. Next slide, please. The preparation of the budget is a significant undertaking by the city's management team and other staff members, and I offer my sincere thanks to all who played a role in that development, including the Director of Finance, Teresa Rogers, the Director of Housing Services, Eric Brown, the Director of Recreation and Parks, Abby Bruber, the Director of Planning and Development, Mark Depot, the Police Chief, Tom Ledwell, Streets Department Superintendent, Steve Strasberg, the Utility Superintendent, Corrie Salper, Sewer Department Superintendent, Dan Summerhill, the Water Department Superintendent, Mike Rawlings, my executive assistant, Erica Erica Kirchner, the City Clerk, Dove Barber, as well as Krista Gardner from Smith Elliott Kearns and Company, S E K. It's a lot of staff that I just named, and that's because there's a lot of people that need to get together in a room many, many, many times to put the budget together. I also wish to thank, to express my gratitude to Mayor Becker and members of the Finance Committee, Council President Pecorero and Councilmember Kabachi. They devoted considerable time to reviewing the fiscal year twenty-five budget proposal, and their guidance and direction was instrumental in the budget's development. Mr. President, that concludes the staff report.
Alright, thank you very much. And I'm delighted, I've been to turn to the mayor earlier, I forgot, I apologize. What we said to the question, we're going to wrap one month, Mr. Kabachi made. Um, but uh, did you like to wrap up, uh, Mayor Becker?
Yeah, I'd just like to say a couple things uh regarding the budget before um we wrap up or or open it for questions. So uh, one of the things, and this this is for um those who are listening at home, maybe here in the audience. Um, the adoption of the of the budget every year is probably one of the most important legislative actions uh that the Common Council takes up uh each year. And just to reiterate, I know it's been said a few times, but for the twelfth year in a row, the city's property tax rate remains unchanged or remains the same, and personal property taxes uh tax rates will also remain um unchanged as well. Uh, the the city's capital projects funds, uh, one of the things that's really important by that is by outlining goals and initiatives in the Capital Projects Fund, the fiscal year twenty-five budget is able to serve as a roadmap to capital improvement plans and funding over the next five years. And this has enabled the city to visualize the future and longer-term planning for large investments in projects that will significantly enhance how the city functions. And some of those projects were named uh including the Water Main Replacement that is currently taking place, the Pure Gore Westminster Project, which I'm incredibly excited about breaking ground on uh at some point in time, and the nitrogen uh enhanced nitrogen removal project uh as well. One of the things that uh Ms. Imols mentioned, but I would also like to include in some of the numbers, and this is uh uh credit to the staff that we have um in working with the with the council and uh making sure that the city remains uh fiscally uh responsible is that the grant funding included eight million dollars in ARPA funds for this year, four million dollars in federal funds, one million dollars in state funds, and two point six million dollars in county funds. Uh, and those were grants that were received uh by staff this year, uh which I think is just a phenomenal asset. Um, and is so happy to see included in the budget. Uh, some of the new projects that were mentioned, um, what we, in addition to those, what we will uh also be doing is including the uh continuation of the new Community Pavilion uh at Wakefield Valley Park, uh and I'm looking forward to some other um infrastructure taking place or trails, of course, being uh maintained out there. Um, and then, of course, as I mentioned, the water reuse um project. Uh, I would like to thank uh Council President Pecorero and uh Councilmember Tony Kabachi um for spending numerous hours in meetings uh as we uh went through the budget line by line. I'd like to thank Ms. Imols uh and Mrs. Rogers uh and also um Ms. Gardner uh for their tireless work uh on putting together a budget for the City of Westminster that is uh fiscally responsible, balanced, and sets us in a place in which we can look at the future without much worry for funding. Uh, so I would like to say thank you for all of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Mary. Uh, well, you know, uh, you know, so, you know, to remind everybody that we will have two work sessions on the budget, we'll all have a chance to do a deep dive into everything that's in there and uh go through with the assistance of the staff. And then uh the expectation is that we will adopt the budget. Now, of course, Memorial Day falls on um the day of our normal council meeting. Again, the months that will be postponed in that meeting for one day until Tuesday evening, so we can adopt the budget before the end of the month, which is always our intention to try to get done. Um, so we have plenty of time for uh plenty of time for the discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments this time that they'd like to bring up?
Mr. President, I'd just like to again thank, thank the staff for all the hard work they did. They put a ton of time into this. Thank you and the mayor as well for the work that you did, and most importantly, for putting up with me and all my grumbling and complaining and moaning and obstinacy on things and and not understanding lowdown to station tables at one point, which is uh ridiculous. But anyway, so I just wanted to say thank you very much for all the hard work and putting up with me on this.
Great, well, it's always a pleasure. Alright, well, if no one else wishes to be heard, um, I'll just give a close by saying, the mayor's absolutely right. Your budget decisions are the most important decisions any government makes. Budget is policy. In Westminster, it's been our policy through the budget, you know, to make uh, you know, the careful fiscal management priority. And we've done that with the support of the council and staff, who leads the way on that on a daily basis. Um, also, you know, great support on capital projects from our federal and state partners, which has allowed a lot of this to take place. But because of that waiver, we're investing in our community, important infrastructure projects like water and sewer, fiber, recreational facilities, and many other things. That's critical to the quality of life. We offer a lot of citizens here. And uh, we also invest in our employees, and that's also critical, because we recognize that the city's only as good as the folks on the frontline who are doing all the work and providing services. It's a pleasure to be able to do that. Look forward to discussions over the next few weeks, and uh, you know, looking forward to a balanced budget if you have a uh like, so we'll take a vote now um on the introduction of the uh budget ordinance. All those in favor of introduction, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. You guys seem to have it, the ayes have it. And uh, again, we will uh, we bring out the schedule for that conversation. Next item is introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero five. We'll map amendment count on eight twenty four dash zero one, amending the zoning map. To rezone parcel F one B of the Carroll County Department of Public Works amended plat of parcels F one and C one, uh PB fifty-four PG two forty-eight, from the IR industrial restricted zone to the B business zone. Uh, Mr. DePoe is not with us tonight, but uh Ms. Gerhardt is, so we will turn to you for, you know, an acclamation of the site. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Um, on October twenty-third of twenty twenty-three, an application for amendment of the City Westminster zoning map was filed on behalf of Liberty Road Reality LLC to rezone parcel F one B of the Carroll County Department of Public Work amended plat of parcel F one and C one um from the current zoning of IR industrial um restricted to the B business zones. The property is located east of Littlestown Pike, which is Maryland Route ninety-seven, and approximately three hundred and twenty feet south of the intersection of Meadow Branch Road and Maryland Route ninety-seven. The property is undeveloped and is currently point one seven four acres in size and is owned by Dale Feizer and Deborah Ellis. The property was annexed into the City of Westminster in nineteen eighty-five, and in twenty sixteen, the property was then subdivided into two different parcels. The larger larger piece of three point three nine two acres was transferred to the Carroll County Commissioners, while the point one seven four acre piece we're discussing tonight was then created. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow the property to be used as a commercial parking lot for the development proposed on the adjacent property south at eight forty-two Littlestown Pike, uh Maryland Route ninety-seven, which is zone B business. A commercial parking lot is a permitted use in the B business zone, however, it's not allowed in the current IR restricted industrial zone. A piecemeal rezoning such as this, which only impacts one property by state law, must prove that there's been a change in the current neighborhood from the last comprehensive rezoning or that a mistake in the original zoning was made. It's the burden of the applicant to provide this proof. On February fifteenth of twenty twenty-four, LMA twenty-four oh one was introduced to the Planning and Zoning Commission for informational purposes only. On March twenty-first of twenty twenty-four, the commission then had then held a public hearing for this amendment. There are various points that were considered by the Planning Commission as part of their deliberation process, all of which can be found in your staff report. After the discussion and deliberation, the commission recommends that the Mayor and Common Council approve LMA twenty-four oh one rezoning of this property from IR industrial restricted zone to the B business zone to due to the mistake in the original and comprehensive zoning on the property. On April eighteenth of twenty twenty-four, the commission was provided with a draft commission report and recommendation and a draft ordinance for review and approval. The commission then authorized the commission chair to provide final approval of these draft documents. Uh, our department received this approval dated April nineteenth that the draft documents pertaining to this amendment were satisfactory, I'm sorry, satisfactory and accurately reflected the commission's decision. And I'm here to help answer any questions if you have any.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Gerhardt. Um, are there any questions on this item? Well, that's got a motion here, mercy.
Yeah, I'll move to introduce ordinance number twenty-four dash oh five, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kabachi. Is there a second?
Second.
The second, the motion by Mr. Kabachi, and the second by Ms. Gilbert. Alright, any discussion, questions? Ms. Gerhardt?
Mr. President, I
Ms. Gilbert.
Just have a question just to, for my own clarity. So this is the property beside what is now a hair salon. It's not, it's not the hair salon. Also, it's just the property beside it, correct?
The hair salon was annexed into the city about twenty sixteen-ish, and so this is just that small parcel that's next to it. Uh, the hair salon has the B business zone, and so it's going to be connected to that parcel as a a redevelopment project for a commercial parking lot.
Okay, so they will be um demolishing what was Feizer's market or the hair, what is currently the hair salon?
Yes.
And making all that one big
I'm not sure if there's gonna be a consolidation that'll happen. Um, yes, there will be. But um, the the idea is that the the uses will be connected between the two parcels.
Alright, thank you.
Nice. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff?
I guess it might be just a tad unrelated, but state highway administration's probably doing a study of that area, Route ninety-seven. That study is really um really necessary. Um, traffic now backs up all the way past Southern Avenue. Going north, we had some recent development in that area that um did not allow us one additional travel lane. That's been very complicating in that whole area. So we'll, we'll look forward to this development, and we'll look forward to seeing some improvements to Route Route ninety-seven. Good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good, very good. Alright. Hearing further discussion? Will move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys seem to have it, the ayes have it. And um, the ordinance is introduced. Um, so we'll schedule the public day.
So there's
Twenty days advertising, so we'll have this in in June.
Yes, that's that's our goal. We're gonna start doing the advertising right after we needed it, wanted it to be introduced first, so we're working for that.
Thank you very much. Alright. Um, final item on your ordinances and resolutions is introduction of Charter Amendment Resolution number twenty-four dash zero one, Charter Amendment Resolution of the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Westminster concerning the Single Subject Enforcement to amend the Charter of the City of Westminster, Section forty-four, Enforcement of Ordinances. Ms. Imols?
Thank you, sir. It has come to the attention of city staff that a provision of the charter is outdated, that respect that deals with penalties for the enforcement of ordinances. The proposed Charter Amendment Resolution number twenty-four dash oh one in front of you updates these provisions to enhance the efficient enforcement of its ordinance. Essentially, the charter right now um declares a specific amount that the city can charge for fees or penalties, and the charter amendment in front of you clarifies that you have up to what the state allows, which at the moment is a thousand dollars. Uh, could change in the future, but this change would allow us to stay within state limits without having to change charter every time that changes. Um, staff recommends introduction of Charter Amendment Resolution number twenty-four dash oh one. That concludes the staff report.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Imols. Now the motion on introduction.
I can confirm.
The motion by Mr. Dayhoff is to introduce, is there a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert. Thank you. Any discussion? Questions? It's always a good idea to be in council with states law, so I'm glad we're, like, their staff caught this. When you said we're out of date, I thought I'm not, you know, maybe using the rack or something.
That's, that's a future charter amendment. I would like to clarify that our city attorney, uh, Mrs. Karen Ross, noticed that this issue and brought this forward to staff her.
Very good, Ms. Ross. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, hearing no discussion, uh, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and uh the Charter Amendment is introduced for future action. Um, next item on the agenda is unfinished business. There's no unfinished business, of which I'm aware. Does anybody have any unfinished business for the council? There are none of the new businesses. There's no new business on the agenda. Does anybody have any new business? There are none. Move on to departmental reports. Ms. Imols, lead us through those.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, I wanted to make a couple of comments myself first. I had the opportunity to not only attend Flower and Jazz, but to also hand out the free flowers alongside Councilmember Gilbert and some staff members. I really thought that was a great event. I was, whoever's in charge of the weather these days, thanks. Yep, it was really, it was really lovely.
That's a significant piece of your power.
For no, for no effort.
Well, did you read the Charter and then? She got this, your power.
That's just our city staff being, like, financially responsible, right?
There you go.
And so I want to thank the staff that helped put that event on. They arrived at about four in the morning to put on the Flower and Jazz event. Uh, I, of course, was not there at four in the morning, but I just want to thank all of those that were. Um, we also had a really special, um, grand opening of the Aquatic Center today. I'm going to thank you all on the council for attending that um, grand opening and for supporting this important project. As I mentioned, this is the first construction project that I had the opportunity to pitch to the council, and then also to see from start to finish through construction. So, uh, it's important to me for a variety of reasons that I outlined today, uh, but also for that reason as well. So, and then, doesn't it look great? I think the staff did a fantastic job out there. Um, I'm excited for the opportunity for the community moving forward. So with that, we will start with the Recreation and Parks Department, Ms. Gruber.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I appreciate all of the positive comments about Flower and Jazz. And Mayor Becker, I especially appreciate the good weather you've been bringing us these days. Finally, somebody's in charge of the, they're doing, now the pressure's on, aren't you? Um, and I do also appreciate, um, your attendance at today's ribbon cutting events. I thought that it was a wonderful, uh, celebration today for our community to be launching this, um, state-of-the-art aquatic facility that actually needed, um, some care and attention for many years. So thank you for having the foresight to do that and to protect this recreational asset for many generations to come. It is very important to our community. Um, I was making a joke with somebody today. I said, it's like we can't have enough bike racks out there because every kid that lives around the pool rides their bike there, um, during the stuff, spend their days, uh, with friends and in a positive recreational activity. So, um, thank you again. And I also thought that it was a really remarkable day for our staff to join us, um, afterwards and get to see the facility and also sign up for their free pool memberships that they're eligible for as a benefit of city employment. So it was really a wonderful day out there, and we really appreciate your support. Um, so that concludes my report because, uh, we've talked a lot about recreation today, and I don't want to keep this meeting going any longer than I need to, but thank you again. It is much appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Gruber. Uh, I, it was Ms. Gruber's idea to turn this into, um, a multi-event, so we started with the ribbon cutting, and then we had the opportunity to have a staff lunch in at noon, and they always appreciate that opportunity. But I have to say, today was really lovely to see the staff just enjoying, uh, the space and the time to relax for a moment. We have really hardworking staff, and they had a chance to spend time with each other in, in such a beautiful environment, and it's not that often that I get to see the staff relax, because we're usually running around like chickens with our heads off, and it was nice to see that for just a moment, um, during lunchtime.
Pretty good pit beef, too.
Pretty good pit beef, too. Country Kitchen is
Country Kitchen.
Country Kitchen was our host today, and they are also, um, the, they do the sponsorship for the Help Me Out Your Abbey.
They run the concession stand.
Concession stand, yes. So Country Kitchen is our partner at the aquatic facility. As Ms. Gruber indicated, um, and as I mentioned today during my comments, this project was one that the council had to take, um, some important, had to make some important budget decisions, um, a couple of years ago. You've just made some important budget decisions tonight. You'll continue making them in the next few weeks. Um, but I just want to thank you again for your support for that project from a financial perspective. It absolutely would not have happened in that way if you hadn't made those tough decisions. We understand that, and we really appreciate it. Speaking about the budget tonight, I want to go a little bit out of order um, and start by thanking Ms. Rogers for her enormous effort in putting the fiscal year twenty-five budget together. So you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Impulse. Good evening. I just want to echo everyone else's sentiments, but it's my turn to thank you now. Uh, I want to thank, um, Councilman Kibachi, uh, Mayor Becker, Mayor Becker, and, um, President Pecker for your work on the Finance Committee many times, and we'll see you again soon for that. Um, I really do want to thank all of the city staff, all of the directors, superintendents, assistant superintendents. Um, and at that last hour, you know, we had a team putting together the books that you have before you. So thank you to Rick Moore, and thank you to Erica Kirchner, um, Ms. Imp, Ms. Impulse's, uh, executive assistants, and also to our city clerk, Barbara. So, um, it's been a pleasure working on, on the budget this year, and I look forward to finishing it up with you.
I can close my report. I'm just glad we're all still standing on that. Um, as Ms., does anyone have a question for Ms. Rogers? As Ms. Rogers indicated, um, we could not have done what we've done with the budget without the help of our IT director, specifically this year, to make everything on one page and get it all organized at the last possible minute. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Moore. You have the floor.
Yes, well. Um, just a few things I'm going to bring up. Um, you go to a lot of specifics in this forum, but we have been working with our state and federal partners to do an assessment and discussion on our assets and our locations, trying to just um, have that open discussion as more and more chats are happening, um, to understand what we can do to better ourselves and what we're doing right, things we can improve on. So it's been a very good discussion for all involved. Um, our team has often performed several analyses on our security posture, the products we're using, uh, ways that we're doing things, and we've discussed it with Ms. Impulse. Uh, we're looking to reduce costs but improve our footprint, so those are some things we're constantly working on. Um, and the other thing I'll mention today, we had to allege of our multi-factor product today for about two hours this afternoon. Um, so we had actually gone to BiHass and turned off because they had leash line outage. So, uh, my team stepped in, we started monitoring all the logins to make sure they were actually going for Maryland and things looked legit. Uh, and as soon as we saw the apps start working again, we got it back online in just in time for the five p.m. there. So, um, as far as Portland, she have any questions?
Yes. I would just like to say thank you for keeping everyone updated, uh, that morning when we had the citywide, uh, internet outage. I don't even remember what day it was. I think it was some day last Friday, last Friday. Um, your, your updates, the email, um, especially, you know, when the city was able to get onto its backup provider, uh, were incredibly helpful throughout the day and keeping up, keeping us updated as to where we were. So, uh, thank you very much for that.
All right, I'm very excited to announce our newest member of the senior leadership team, Mr. Alvin Merritt, who is joining us as the Director of Human Resources. Mr. Merritt.
Thank you, Ms. Impulse. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm honored to be here today. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. Um, completing my first week has been fantastic, uh, ending with today with the meeting tonight and also being at the ribbon cutting. So again, thank you, and, uh, it's been wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Impulse, for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to doing great things for the City of Westminster.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the Housing Department. Mr. Brown.
Good evening. I have just one thing to bring, to bring to the council and everybody's attention. We are at that point in the year where we began sending out the first notices to landlords that they need to renew their licenses. Um, they expire at the end of June. So we're calling through everything and keeping our fingers crossed that we'll be able to send the first notice out by Friday. So, so then it's, in June, we'll send a second notice letting everybody know that at June thirty, there'll be happen renew. Then each, each month you go get asked that, then there's a penalty associated with it. So that's where we are. That's all.
Yes.
Uh, I just want to say, aside, thank, uh, Mr. Moore, thank you, Mr. Brown, um, for assisting with all the complaints, or maybe not complaints, but information that I've been receiving from HOAs and various homeowners uh, over whose grass it is to cut. Uh, and so I appreciate your hard work, uh, taking the time and your schedule to look into those for me and figuring out exactly whose grass it is to cut. So, um, yes, once again, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Planning Department. Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you. Um, on May first, the Historic District Commission met. Uh, they started a preliminary discussion as to some historic signage recommendations within the historic district. In addition to that, they also started some preliminary discussions about the location recommendations uh, for Bell Square, and potential, the sign could go for the two hundred and fiftieth, uh, nation's birthday. And, um, we, uh, acquired a liberty tree and figuring out maybe where the best place to, for that to be planted in Bell Grove Square. Um, I know that Mark told you about, um, the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting that was happening, um, May seventh at the last meeting. Just to update you, that was our Board of Zoning Appeals twenty-four oh three for Shepherd Staff. They had requested, um, a special exception as well as three variances, and both, all of that had gotten approved. Uh, lastly, on May sixteenth, we have our planning mission, uh, coming up on Thursday, and we're going to be holding a public hearing on resolution twenty-four three for Annexation seventy-seven. That is, um, Covington Properties, which is five thirty-five Old Westminster Pike. And, um, on February twenty-sixth, that annexation resolution was introduced to, before the mayor and common council. That's all I have.
Are there any questions for Planning Department? Mayor.
What's the liberty tree?
It's a special kind of tree that, um, there was a organization that offers, um, I know they had it somewhere in Pennsylvania, and it's, it's a special type of tree. And so, um, we got, I know that the city got two of them. I can find out more information on that for you.
So plus prior to the Revolutionary War, you know, local communities of safety would have their meetings under our liberty tree in a community. So, so there are still some of these trees in existence that, you know, lived for, you know, long, long time, for centuries. And, um, yeah, they, where they can, they take stealing from them.
I only heard you were a pro-terran and also a historian.
I stole Mr. Dehoff's.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gerhardt.
I think that the rich reason was given at St. John's College.
It is indeed in Atlas.
Huh, all right.
So it would be a wonderful contribution to the city of Westminster.
Thank you.
All right, hearing no more questions, we will move on to the Police Department. Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, just a couple of quick points to touch on, uh, staffing. You know, we've been working hard to fill the vacancies. Uh, you know, crowds say we have three ulcers that are entering the final phase of their FTO program. Uh, and then our, we have a recruit graduating next week from the Frederick City Police Department that will be going against FTO. Uh, so we're working hard to fill the remaining vacancies, but we're getting, getting there. Um, and then the other point we want to touch on is we just finished an internship, uh, with, uh, Ms. Katie Chaney, Jr. at McGanville College, completed an internship, uh, she was assigned to our Criminal Investigations Bureau. Uh, you know, she obtained first hand look at what our detectives do and how they process evidence and handle cases. Um, and she's able to visit several forensic labs. Uh, but the fourth thing is she actually helped us with our social media, updating some of our templates and things like that. So it was very beneficial for her and beneficial for us. So it's something that we're going to continue to do. That's all I have.
Are there any questions for the Police Department? I would like to wrap up by just saying the partnership that the staff has with the council is real, and it matters in this community. And we really appreciate the hard work that you're about to put into to do the budget, which gives us the funds to allow you, to allow us to carry forward and implement all these items that you're putting forward for us. We really appreciate that. Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Impulse, and thanks to all the departments, the heads who are here with us. Final item on our agenda this evening, it's citizens' comments, where we invite the public to address the mayor and council any issues pertaining to tonight's agenda or any issues. For citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments at, uh, by the email at comments@westminstermd dot com. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. We ask commenters to please include their address and phone number with their comments. I will now invite comments from anyone who is present. Is anyone here this evening who wishes to, uh, uh, make any comments? All right. Hearing no one, um, that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Um, as I stated earlier, the next, uh, regular meeting at council will be on Tuesday, May twenty. Uh, and without objection, we are adjourned.